Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Our business meeting, December 6th. Would everyone please join me and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the Constitution just as a strong law.
Okay, we have a slight change to recommend to our agenda. And I would ask that the Central PTSA liaisons be allowed to speak first and share their report, and then they are also first among the visitors' speaking times. So could we have a motion, please, to accept the changes to the agenda? Jan, second by Maria, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. There are several people who have signed up to speak tonight, and they will speak in the order that their permission was sought from Mrs. Cushman to be on our agenda. We have Bethany Morgalski, Sarah Surinski, Renee Elwood, and Umbereen Mustafa. Each person will have three minutes for their remarks, and Mrs. Cushman will provide a signal when you have thirty seconds left. Okay, with that said, welcome Allison and Stacy.
Miss him? Oh, I thought that guy was there.
Thank you. Okay. So we'll just start out with some, it's very brief tonight, but our good news is Allison and I are continuing with our secondary engagement, and in November, we handed out the fortune cookies, and it was amazing. Staff and students all loved it. We got a great response from everybody. The students were Snapchatting all over the place, and it was just a huge success, so...
You could see, looking, reading their fortunes to each other during homerooms. I walked out, I was like, "Aww."
So it was, yeah, it was really great. We were very happy, and this month, we are going to be surprising the students and coming in on an evening and taping candy canes on all the lockers at the secondary buildings.
So when I got home...
You just told them.
Oh, oh.
Well, okay, maybe not. Do people really watch this? I don't know.
You'll find out.
Yeah, we'll find out now. Okay, so, all right, it may or may not be.
So when I got home from work, I had to do a lot of heavy lifting before I could walk through my front door.
I think I mentioned it at the last one, too, so that's okay. Students don't watch this. Do you want to do the second one?
You'd be surprised to watch this.
Yeah.
You would be, yes. So, membership sales, we're doing phenomenally well. We were, our goal was 1,350. We are, as of today, we are at 1,361. So, we were really excited, and they're still being sold, so we're hoping...
Yeah, we just bought 250 more cards because we needed them.
So that's really, so that's, we appreciate everyone's support. We've been coming to events, selling to staff and teachers, and really appreciate allowing us to come and do that, so thank you. Our focus now, we've been through all of the buildings at least once to the meetings, and we are getting everybody set up, meeting the new people involved. So we are turning our attentions to programming, and we've reached out to Sweetheart and Heroes, and we have exactly the information we need, but we might need to partner with people to cover all the bases that we need to. So more will be coming on that, but the wheels are in motion, and we're engaging everyone that needs to be part of that decision-making process. So that's pretty much our update for tonight.
Yeah. So are you okay if we go into...
Okay, and you can segue right into your visiting speaking time.
Okay.
Thank you.
I guess I'll start, is that okay?
Yeah.
So last spring, I attended the first meeting the Webster District held that was open to the public regarding the possible thoughts of changing the start times of the elementary and secondary schools. My husband and I have three boys that are a part of the Webster School District, one at each level, elementary, middle, and high school. I found the initial meeting at Spry very informative and was impressed with the speakers they had to come in just for that first meeting. At that first meeting, it was also offered to be on a panel that would be exploring all avenues of what would impact our kids with this possible time change. I decided to be on this panel, not only as a parent, but because of my role as co-president for Central PTSA, and I wanted to be knowledgeable for our families. I have to say, it was a wonderful experience. At each of the group meetings with guest speakers from transportation, daycare, and athletic directors, we were all broken into groups of elementary and secondary, and we would discuss a topic, and then we were able to bring our group's thoughts and concerns to the guest speakers that were there that day. Each person's questions, whether it be positive or negative, were thoroughly answered, and everyone had great input from both elementary and secondary teams, that I felt. Coming away from these meetings made me feel confident that for me personally, as a parent, this was going to be a good fit for my family. I am able to see this at both angles with having my kids at the elementary and secondary levels. I feel it would be a positive for my youngest son, who is up by 6:45 and ready to roll, and I feel for my two older boys, the later start time will put them at an advantage in having a much more successful day by getting that extra sleep time in the morning, because due to homework load and sports, it leads to a much later bedtime for them at night. I look forward to the next year as we roll this out for a new opportunity for all of our Webster students.
Thanks, Stacy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy.
So I was involved in these meetings early on, and I was here for a lot of the experts that were brought in to talk about the research and the studies that were done, and from that moment, I'll be honest, I was on board because what they shared was so compelling. It was hard to really find a reason not to do it. And personally, I remember being a teenager, and parts of it, I wish I didn't, but I remember feeling like I didn't wake up until 9:30 in the morning. It's like, I was moving, but my brain didn't click until like 9:30. And it really, a lot of this really kind of drove home for me, as I have a child in middle school, and as soon as his voice started to change, I noticed his sleep habits and his need for sleep was shifting as well. And he is a bear to get out of that bed in the morning, and he really isn't functioning. I'm amazed he gets on the bus sometimes. I worry about that at times, because I don't even know if he'll know it's there. So for us, I think it's going to be, I think it's going to be better. I see a burst of energy that pops out at 8:30, nine o'clock at night, and he's racing around the house chasing the dog, which was not the case four months ago. So time, in terms of this coming up now with my son going from being elementary age into middle school, I'm getting to see it firsthand, and I have no doubt that this isn't the right thing to do. And I think it's going to help us personally find a better balance in our life, because with Stacy on this, with between sports and plays and homework and getting things done, he needs to be up later, and he can't really afford to lose that sleep. So being able to sleep in a little later, I think, will be better. And I know there's been, sitting through some of the PTSA meetings and listening to things, I realize people have concerns, and I know change is hard, but even as an elementary school parent, getting him out earlier would have been better. And it would have given my husband and I more flexibility with work, believe it or not, because having him on that bus early meant I only had to worry about care after school. And for me, as a touch point as a parent, that I'd rather just send him to after-school care than before and after, or trying to juggle that with our professional lives. So personally, this just seems like the right thing to do, and I wholeheartedly support it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, and enjoy the rest of your evening in the Schrader concerts.
Thank you.
So want to make sure we accommodate everybody.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays. Mrs. Morgalski? Thank you.
Hi, Bethany.
Hello. So you get to hear the rosy and cheery side, and here I am, the doom and gloom. My name is Bethany Morgalski, and I met you all last month. I want you to visualize for a moment that you have three small children, a crying baby, a kindergartner, and a second grader. The kindergartner refuses to go to school. Just visualize, imagine, remember back when you were sending your kids to kindergarten? The bus comes at seven o'clock in the morning. It's just not a pretty sight. So I'm going to, I'm going to read here for you. My husband and I have three kids, two of whom attend DeWitt Road Elementary School, and I come to you tonight as a grieved parent. I spoke to the board last month in regards to concerns I have about the change in school start times next year. I shared the Galasano Children's Hospital's sleep recommendations, as well as their statement that even a small amount of sleep loss can have a big effect on child, on a child's cognition and behavior. I also shared an excerpt from the Child Development Institute's article on the importance of family time on a kid's mental health. Next year, the youngest members of our student body have no choice. Our kids will be losing out on one of the two most valuable resources we have in supporting their general health and well-being, sleep or quality family time. And I totally understand the benefit our high school students will have in gaining an hour, but not at the cost to our youngest children. I'm disappointed that in the weeks following the November board meeting, my concerns were left unaddressed, despite continued correspondence with the school board. It is unfortunate that of the studies listed on the school's start time initiative page online, only one took into consideration the needs of the elementary student. There were repeated concerns from community forum members that we may be rushing into this change and overlooking the impact implementation will have on our elementary students. There have been multiple requests for more studies to be done for our younger kids, and yet we have seen none. We have asked for more time, and yet it's becoming increasingly clear that there is no slowing this train. Why should we care about our kids losing a little bit of sleep, or an hour of family time? After all, kids are resilient, and change is a part of life. Isn't that correct? In the past ten to twenty years, the rates of autism, ADD, ADHD, learning disorders, and other behavioral challenges continue to go up, with autism alone increasing more than 119% from 2000 to 2010. At the age of five to six years old, children begin to hit new milestones in brain development, and this is often when these challenges or deficits will first show their head. If you happen to be a parent of one of the increasing numbers of children who struggle with cognition, behavior, or a parent of child, a child who lags behind academically, anything that further threatens your child's mental health should be questioned. I have worked too hard to help my own child overcome his cognitive and behavioral challenges to stand by silently while those who are supposed to be looking out for his cognitive and behavioral, I'm sorry, with those who are supposed to be looking out for the community wellness throw the well-being of our kindergarteners and other youngsters to the wind. If they are forgotten now, extra sleep won't matter six years from now. Yes, I am grieved, and I am not alone.
Thanks, Beth.
Thank you. Mr. Ostrowski? Is he present?
Yes, Beth.
Okay, thank you. Sarah Korinski?
Professor, if you can call now.
Okay, thank you, Beth. Umbereen, I'm sorry, Renee Elwood, please.
Wait, Umbereen. Renee? Okay.
Hello, thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Well, thank you for allowing me a few minutes to talk to you and just express how the school's start time change will actually really positively impact my family in a few different ways. So I recently moved to Webster, moved here June 2017, and my family moved here really solely because of the school district and the school system that we heard wonderful things about. We knew that, we researched it, and that's what drove us to this area. So it's been a great experience. So that being said, when my son started school, we were a little bit surprised that school actually started at 8:50 in the morning, because where we moved from, all the younger elementary kids were going to school at 7:15 in the morning, catching the bus in front of our house. So it caught us a little bit by surprise. But that immediately led to us being immersed into full wraparound care, and with that, obviously comes a price tag, too, so something you have to live with as two full-time working parents in our house. But as we've gone forward this year, I'm fortunate enough that my employer has allowed me the opportunity to flex my schedule a little bit, so I can come into work a little bit later, so that we can alleviate some of that financial strain, and I don't have to worry about childcare before and afterwards. That being said, it's a great benefit, but it also adds a lot of stress. It adds a lot of stress to not only me during my day as a full-time employee and parent, but to our life in general. So my son's ready to go in the morning. He's up at 6:30, he's ready, he's at his personal best, he's engaged, he's enthusiastic, and he's ready to conquer the world. If we could start school earlier, that would allow me to work a regular, normal schedule every day, get home earlier. Our evenings for family dinner would be pretty structured, right on time, not so disjointed as they are at times. And then when you start throwing in things like school activities, practices, other events, you know, you try to squeeze a lot into a very small amount of time every night when people work, work full-time and you have young children. So if the school time began earlier, it would be a great benefit for us financially, because I can't sustain a schedule for multiple years of going into work later, staying later. So we would only be needing childcare at one point in time of the day. It would also be a great benefit for my son, who, you know, he's young. He would love that social time after school, to be in any sort of after-care program with his friends, if there's support needed as he gets older to do homework, that would be great for us. And then really, at the end of the day, the big picture is that it impacts our family in a positive way, not only the financial benefit, but also our own well-being, our engagement as a family, as a structure, the amount of quality time we can spend with one another, being with each other, being engaged, and just having that time versus always rushing and feeling disjointed. So that is how the time would really benefit not only me and my family, but I think a lot of other families in this community that have full-time working parents and young children. Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to be here. Umbereen Mustafa? Thank you.
Hi there. Umbereen. How are you all? I, my name's Umbereen Mustafa. I have three children, one at State Road, one at, for one more year, one at Spry, and one at Schrader. So I span the full range of everything that happens that you all impact for our students. More than five years ago, I started reading research about the impact of early start times on older kids, kids that have already gone through puberty or are going through puberty. And I started asking questions and started having conversations with my peers about why we don't just shift. To me, if there's a base of data, it seems like you should just make some basic decisions and go. And it's interesting that the answer always came back that sports were going to be an issue. And in the last couple of years, it was that Monroe County sports would never change. And then, you know, there was another reason that always seemed to come back to a logistic around sports, and I thought, "This is really crazy. I mean, our kids are suffering." And so I was delighted when the proposition came out to explore later start times for the secondary schools. So I jumped right into that conversation, and I was very pleasantly surprised at the data that reinforced what I'd been seeing for years, but also the conversations that took place that really mitigated the logistical and pragmatic concerns, because it means you can really focus on what's important, which is the well-being of the kids. I'd like to also bring another perspective, that my oldest was in elementary school when the times were already flipped. So I've lived through this change once before, and I brought it up a couple of times during the panel discussions. I remember when we first shifted and the younger kids had to go later, I can tell you how frustrating it was for so many parents. And I've always worked full-time, but for how many parents whose kids got up at the crack of dawn and then tapped us on the shoulders, "How much longer till I can get on the bus? How much longer till I can..." There's going to be a transition time, and now my elementary student is complaining that he's going to have to get up early. But the one that was in elementary school six, seven, eight years ago, whenever that change took place, couldn't wait to get on the bus, you know? So I think that change takes time. I commend you for making this change. I thank you for making this change, because the data has supported it for long before. I think the conversation really got serious here in Webster. As I said, I've got three, they'll all be impacted by this, and, you know, my oldest will have one year of this benefit, but, boy, the secondary students really need it, and I think the elementary students will adapt, and families, you know, the more you can communicate and support, which is the sense I got from your panel discussions, the more you can communicate and support the different needs for different families, the better the district will benefit. So I thank you for making this change for everybody's benefit.
Thank you.
Thank you, Umbereen.
And happy holidays.
I think it is worth mentioning that this, the meetings that we conduct, our business meetings, and our visiting speaking time is a courtesy extended to the community, because we do want to hear from community members. However, there isn't a response expected. Anything that's shared with and to, directed to the board is taken very seriously and is very well considered by the board, and we truly appreciate and respect anyone taking the time out of their day to come and speak with us. So that being said, can we move along in our agenda to our student liaisons?
If I could, I would greatly appreciate if we could go first. I have a concert I'd be at.
Because you have a concert, yes, we know.
So I actually have to be there. So, is that okay with you? Yes. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Please do, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Lily Purvetara, and I'm a junior at Schrader. This Friday, our sophomores put together our sophomore holiday party with food and a movie that will go until midnight. Our dream diversity club attended this November's Rock to Change Summit. We had ten attendees who gathered new ideas on how to support and make everyone feel comfortable at Schrader. Last Thursday, we had our National Honor Society induction ceremony, where sixty-seven new students were inducted. Our leadership class is currently working on projects to improve the school, including ways to stop bullying and spread kindness. Winter sports are starting up, and we've already had a few games, home games this season, and winter concerts will be going on for the next few weeks.
Tommy Nguyen is a senior at Schrader who is in Ottawa playing hockey and has been digitally attending all of his classes at Schrader this year by using a mobile stand dressed with a T-shirt. Tommy Skypes into his classes and does all of his work via Google Classroom. His teachers are so invested in him and graduating that they are taking ownership out of this, of this out-of-the-box idea. I'm actually in a couple of his classes, and everything is going well, so that's a great idea. Tommy Nguyen.
Tommy.
Yep. On Saturday, December 1st, twelve students from Webster attended the inaugural high school lockdown cybersecurity competition at UB from 9:30 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. Teams of four students had to defend a network against hackers real-time, complete business tasks, maintain a budget, and participate in a capture the flag event. We would also like to thank our PTSA for spreading good fortune on Friday, November 16th, by handing out fortune cookies to students as they came into school. Thank you. Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Amy Colley, and I'm a sophomore at Webster Thomas. I hope that you are all having a wonderful December and enjoying all the blessings that this time of year gives us. To recap on some of the things happening in Thomas this past month, we had so many times where Thomas was recognized for our outstanding students and staff. One of our special education classes went to Red Robin for a field trip to learn how one must act in a restaurant and how to order and advocate for their needs and wants. We received an email from one of the waitresses applauding all of our Thomas students and aides, and the couple besides them noticed this as well, and ended up paying for their brute meals anonymously. We also held our first-ever tournament for speech and debate at Thomas on November 10th, and were recognized for providing organized and clear directions and schematics, and even had our own Genovilla place third in her category for extemporaneous. Going along with how awesome our students and staff are, we recently had a fundraiser called Bald for Bucks that Ian Avery presented to one of our teachers, Mr. Sufaletta, where we had staff and students shave their heads voluntarily to raise money for a local cancer center. Going into some more community service opportunities, some of our Thomas students worked on a project to create artwork to cover boarded-up windows at the RGH Cancer Institute to help raise cancer patients' spirits. Currently, our students who are involved in National Honor Society are holding a fundraiser for Toys for Tots and collecting new unused toys to donate to the less fortunate. In addition to this, they are also holding a clothing drive for new unused clothing items. Both of these are running from now until December 14th. As all of you must know, Owen Knight celebrated his fifteenth birthday and was treated to a parade in his honor, as well as a huge welcome by the entire school. It was a great event, and based on the faces of students in the crowd, it was appreciated by all. We are so happy to have such a loving community here at Thomas who takes care of one another. Let's talk a little bit about some of our musicians. Coming back from Thanksgiving break, some of our students had received the exciting news that they had been selected for the senior high area all-state ensembles. We had eight students from the orchestra class, six students from Wind Ensemble, six students from Women's Choir, and five students from Mixed Choir. We are all proud of these very talented individuals. Speaking of talent, on December 1st, twelve students, like they said, attended the One Webster inaugural high school lockdown cybersecurity competition. Teams of four students had to defend network against real-time hack attacks, complete business tasks, maintain a budget, and participate in a capture the flag event. The Thomas team consisted of Allison Bracolo, Chris Reek, Alexandra Valkovich, and Alexandra Visca, placing first in the capture the flag event. All participants learned an amazing amount about cybersecurity. The December Monroe County Math League meet was hosted here at Thomas last night. Leading the way for the Titans was Scott Schlead, scoring fourteen points, along with Jack Gribble and Michael Garachi, scoring twelve points each. Great job on mathletes. Moving on to athletics, on Monday, December 3rd, our Webster Thomas Bowlers took on Churchville Chiale. Standings are determined by the number of points accumulated during the season, and our Thomas girls won all three games and the match. Thomas Boys tied their first game, but won the next two and the match. Webster Boys Swimming won their first meet against Brockport, 97 to 86. Thomas Boys Hockey picked up their first win of the season, 6-2 versus Brighton, Wednesday night, and the team took on Schrader and picked up their second win of the season with a 7-0 shutout. Girls Basketball opened up their season with a 60 to 22 win Tuesday night against East High School. We are so proud to have such hard-working athletes, who not only excel in their particular sport or sports, but also in their academics. This rings very true for Sarah Pets, one of our student athletes who is featured on Channel 10 as one of their scholar athletes. Sarah is a Titan volleyball and lacrosse player. In addition to her sports, also attends the rigorous New Visions Medical Program. We are delighted to have such a model student athlete. That's all for me. I hope you all have a wonderful evening.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you so much for being here. Happy holidays to you as well. We continue with our liaison reports. Sue, would you like to come up and share a report? Thank you.
I just have a few things to share from the Webster Teachers Association. We've been really pleased to have seen board members in all of our buildings, visiting teachers and classrooms. And in addition to that, WT officers and the Executive Council have met twice so far with the board to foster our relationships and communications, and we really are looking forward to seeing that continue and have a rotation of all the board members and to meet with us. I've talked before about the WTA CARES new committee focusing on charitable works in the community, and we've begun with two focuses at this point. One is a food drive in all of our buildings to benefit the Backpack Program with the Emmanuel Lutheran Church in Webster, and they are the church that runs it in all of our schools. And teachers in all of the individual buildings are contributing to that. That's a program that goes throughout the year, not just at this time of year. And we're also collecting items needed for the goal program. They have a school store, and we're collecting in all of our buildings to supplement that. And along those same lines of the charitable contributions, many of our schools are bringing in unwrapped gifts to share with the students in the Rochester City School District. We do that every year. Staff, administration, and students are going to be delivering those gifts later in the month, and that's always a wonderful experience for everybody. So that's all I had to share this month.
Thank you, Sue, for sharing on behalf of WTA. And we heard from Allison and Stacy and Central PTSA, so that brings us to our instructional reports. We have a start time check-in report by Larry Wall and Carmen Gamina. Are you going to sit over there?
No. Larry bites, because it's, he hasn't had his dinner.
Just checking.
Yeah.
Just a little progress.
Sure, sure, of course.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So, over the next ten minutes or so, I'll give you an update on our progress up to this point and the work that we still have to do. Before we do either of those two things, though, it's always important for us to remember two things, though, it's always important for us to remember the why. And the first piece begins with four numbers that our superintendent has shared in a number of different contexts. But those first two numbers, which are both high, are positive indicators. Ninety-six percent of our students graduate. Ninety percent of those students go to either a two- or a four-year college after that graduation. Both great, wonderful signs. The next two raise some concerns for us. That twenty-nine number is the percentage of students who, in our Youth Risk Behavior Survey, which is given across all of Monroe County, have indicated that over the last two weeks, I've been so sad or disconnected that I have in some way changed my schedule. And that one-third percentage is the approximate number of our students who are on some sort of a medication for mental health or mental-related situations. So, when we look at those four numbers together, there's a disconnect, and there's a concern. We, our students are producing academically, but perhaps socially, there's more that we can do. And when we began this process in earnest last January, the experts who came and shared their perspective on sleep and the research around it really kept coming back to this term, that it is a modifiable risk factor. It is something that, as a school district, we can do. We can change our times to be more in line with circadian rhythm of adolescents approximately thirteen to seventeen years old. This change is supported by the American Academy of Pediatrics, which put out a report in 2014 that said secondary schools should not start before 8:30, and the New York State School Boards Council, sorry, School Boards Association, as a policy statement last year endorsed this change as well. Those are the things that we began with. We also began with a question, is this possible? Can we do this? And the work throughout last spring was really to challenge whether we could do this from as many different angles as possible. So, Mr. Gamena and I have been visiting all of the schools. We've made it to ten out of the eleven at this point to have conversations with staff to say, these are the changes. How does it look from your perspective? Are there some things that, that we haven't considered yet? And there were several unknowns, because when you shift the start time, there are things connected to the beginning and ends of those days that we needed to talk through with staff. And listening to the staff at both elementary and secondary buildings, we were able to come to a bunch of specifics, and we've got more to go between now and early spring. But last week, you were able to share with all of the staff these specifics, which I'll run through quickly for you. From an elementary's perspective, the student day is going to be six and a half hours. Those hours are there. The elementary staff day will be a half hour before the student day, where teachers will have their congruence time. There will be a chance for meetings and things, and it will end at the same time. The activity period, which right now is before the school day, will shift to after the school day with a bus run, and that activity period will include all that it includes now, except for orchestra and band, which will go back into the last part of the day, which is a model we had in this district previously. At the secondary level, the day will shift to 8:45 to 3:15, which is six and a half hours, and that is a reduction of thirty minutes. So, each class is going to lose about three or four minutes. And the secondary staff day, that extra time, will also be beforehand. Clubs will start at 3:15 with late bus runs to support those. Practices will start at 3:45, and games.
Actually, games won't start at 3:45.
Oh, no, sorry. Right. Traveling too.
Traveling to games, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. This is an exciting slide, because recently, we've been able to hire two co-coordinators for the district to offer wraparound care at all seven of our elementary buildings. Those hours are posted there. And on the fourteenth of December, our Assistant Superintendent for Business will share specifics with families. But looking through your rough numbers, I came up with this range, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but if somebody has taken advantage of those part-time AM hours, which would be one or two days a week, that would be about twenty-four dollars a week per student, and on the other side, which is full-time, three days or more, that would be about sixty-five dollars a week per student for PM care. So, we will have care available at all of our elementary buildings for those students who need them. Did I get that about right? Okay, thanks. But we'll get more specifics soon. And we wanted to get them out, to get those specifics to families as soon as possible, because we know families need to make care decisions quite early for, for next year. Transportation has been working real hard to, to build the schedule within this new model, and these were the parameters that we gave to transportation, and so far, they are holding up. We will not have elementary bus runs before seven o'clock. Kindergarten through second grade will be picked up at their driveway or within one or two, and those late bus runs will continue. Morning darkness was a concern that, you know, came up in the spring and continues to come up. And one thing that some people have brought up is that, you know, if you're a first-grade student, chances are you're at your driveway, and your mom or dad is waiting with you. If you're an eighth-grade student, chances are you're down the road, mom and dad's not with you, and you might be looking at your phone and not paying too much of attention. And so, if we think about, from an overall K-12 perspective, who's the, what's the safest situation for those few mornings when it's dark, it might be that this is a better option. Did you want to give them your scientific, how many days we really are going to have in total darkness?
Sure. I think I've, I've said this before, but I like to geek out on this anyway. So, when we looked at the number, there is a period between December 15th and January 29th where dawn, the first light of the day occurs at approximately 7:08 or 7:09. So, there is a very, there is a window of about approximately five weeks. Now, again, a week and a half of that is Christmas break, that the first few kids that are being picked up between seven and 7:09 will be, it'll be dark. And then first light will hit, and again, it's still, you know, it's still relatively dark, but at least dawn is, is there. And our, our thought is that, you know, we'll make sure that sometime in September, we'll be able to have any and all of our elementary students pick up a, you know, a flasher that they'll, that they can put on their backpack, put on their person each morning. But when you look at, again, the vast majority of days and the vast majority of our kids, you know, the goal is to have the bus appear at their driveway or one or two driveways away when there is light. Now, it may not be full bright sunrise, but at least there is, there is light. And, and like you said, hopefully, you know, I'm sure there are parents at many of those bus stops for our K-2 children, and hopefully, they'll enjoy their One Webster flashers that Mr. Freeman will be ordering. Yeah. They have to say one word.
So, so there's one piece of, of work still to go, as we, we've got to get those designs figured out. Some additional work that, that we still need to, to do. There is a parent group, and we heard from one this evening, who did not participate in the spring and have concerns about that early time for elementary students. And, you know, we want to continue to reach out to that group, and we want to try to brainstorm and help them problem-solve. And again, I go back to the fact that you made this vote, you wanted this vote to be a full year before, so that families would have a chance to, to make adjustment. But, you know, a lesson from that experience is that, moving forward, I think we need to specifically try to think about who might be impacted by a decision but might not necessarily be, be paying attention. Because if I was a parent of a first grader and I heard that the school was investigating start times, particularly around adolescent sleep needs, I might not have thought, I really need to, to pay attention to that. And, you know, it is, it is a little bit distressing, because our, our goal in the spring was to try to hear from as many diverse viewpoints as possible, and to really dig as deeply as we could into those viewpoints to test whether we could do this change. So, so that's one area that we need to continue to work. I reached out to the National Implementation Director of the Start School Later Organization, which I showed a clip from last time I provided an update, and she got back to me with just a couple of pieces, which I'm certainly not going to read to you, but they're on these two slides that talk about the advantages of an earlier time for elementary students, primarily around it being a better match to younger kids' natural schedules, particularly in terms of what happens as the afternoon wears on and they just kind of run out of steam. So, those are there. Next, really beginning in earnest in the next couple of weeks and, and ramping up in the spring, we will be communicating that this change is happening, that here are the specifics to as many groups as possible. We will visit that last building, we'll visit Willink, and we will, in the spring, begin to visit PTSA organizations at each one of the buildings. We'll also continue to connect with the community. Another piece, you know, when we met with all four athletic directors, two retired, two current, last year, we really were reassured that there shouldn't be any major issues. But as the seasons are going on, there are small things that are popping up, and we will continue to work on those small things. Just one example being, the golf team, they don't have to leave because of darkness. They have to leave because of leagues that are starting at the golf courses. And so, you know, the teams are, are quite small, but still, that's something that we're going to have to, to really be sure that we're on top of, because they might have to leave their last-period class a little bit early on days where there are matches a little far away. Another piece is that, you know, parents have raised the concern, if we're delaying our release of, of secondary students by forty-five minutes, that means there'll be less time to, to do homework. And by the way, some of the homework that our sons or daughters are bringing home seems like there's an awful lot, and do teachers get to talk with each other? And so, as part of this, we're going to have a district-wide conversation around, what do we use homework for? What are the expectations around it? And I look forward to facilitating that conversation in the spring, so that students will be able to share their experience, teachers will be able to share their experience, and all of us will be able to benefit from both. And thank you. What kind of questions? Yes, sir.
I kind of came in on the end of this, so I apologize if this was already, but the initial decision to go with this time change, was it initially scheduled for nineteen-twenty, two thousand nineteen thousand, or is it scheduled for two thousand twenty, twenty-one, when it was originally?
For nineteen-twenty.
Okay.
Yep, and it was, we, we began, well, all of the, the large group work began in January of last year, and, and by the, yeah, it was for nineteen-twenty.
And Dave, at, at one point, I think when we very, when we, when we first started, probably even before we had our, our large community forum, there was an idea of, okay, let's study for a year, and then there was a possibility of, okay, if it, if we think it's going to take two full years to, to get out all the nooks and crannies and, and all the bumps and, and obstacles, then maybe we would need two years to plan. But the more we got into it, and especially after we had all of our guest speakers come in last spring, from daycare and from athletics and from transportation, all of, you know, what we were hearing was, no, you know what, this, we could actually get through this in a, you know, if we had a year implementation, or sorry, a year of planning. So, it really was our recommendation last May or June to the board was, you know, we're ready to do this at nineteen-twenty. So, we really, it was really never thought of seriously to, to wait another year to the twenty-twenty-one.
All right, I've heard both. That's why I just figured I'd ask.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Larry. And next, we have a capital project review, an update by Brian Freeman. Thank you, Brian.
We have a two-part presentation. The first part is going to be an update of the work that we've just had done of...
Get rid of his name tag.
I'll take it as a compliment, Larry. So, we have a two-part presentation on the project that is currently undergoing, and then the proposal for next year, or for, excuse me, next week that we have. So, a little background. So, the project we're, we started undertaking this summer was originally from December of 2016, when we had voter approval, forty-three-point-five million dollars. And Phase One focused around our elementary playgrounds, the elementary bathrooms, the boiler systems, cafeteria, AC at Clem North State, and second-floor AC at DeWitt Road Elementary. So, Phase One was approved by the state in February of 2018. Bids were awarded in March, and we started construction in April. Now, Phase Two is Spry and Thomas, the cafeterium, the new library, the DAO renovation, and the B, Buildings and Grounds Facility here. The state just approved that two weeks ago, right before Thanksgiving. We're actually, in yesterday's Webster Herald, our bids were, were published. We're opening those on January 15th. So, we'll give you an update on the progress for Thomas and Spry, probably at that January 17th meeting, based on what happens for those bid openings on the 17th. So, what accomplished the summer of 2018? So, all seven elementary playgrounds were completed and done and ready to go by the time school started. All the boiler systems have been completed at actually eight schools, the Seven Elementary and Schrader. Bathrooms right now, I would say, were ninety-nine-point-nine percent completed at three school, at four schools, Clem South, Schlegel, DeWitt, and Plank South. There's some carpeting that we are going to actually do in-house and tie it into some of the work we are doing that kind of, on the entrance to some of the bathrooms, you'll see, isn't quite finished. That's the only part that's really not. And then any minor items, which we call punch list, is going to get finished over Christmas break while there is nobody around. This upcoming summer, what we have projected is bathrooms at State Road, Plank North, and Clem North to be completed, the air conditioning at State Road and Clem North, those cafeteriums. The windows will be done at Plank North. Those are being entirely replaced to become more aesthetically in line with the other six elementary buildings, rather than have that kind of green jut-out that they have right now. Spry Cafeterium will be scheduled first. We know that. And all other items will fall in line behind that. We're hoping for an eighteen-month construction schedule here at Spry. Thomas, we need to wait until the bids are open before we can develop a construction schedule. So, that's still hanging out there. And I thought I'd just share some pictures with you, kind of, so you get a look. I know many of you have been on tours, but just to see the comparison side-by-side of what they looked like before and what they look like afterwards. So, stark, stark difference, especially on the flooring, much easier to clean and maintain. I know, it always aggravated me when I go and see that one small tile that was cracked, and you, your eyes just go right to it. We no longer have to worry about that anymore with the, with the new type of flooring that we have. Here's another side-by-side angle of just the, the lighting change and the flooring change, what a difference it makes, and it's brought it to a, a modern perspective. And then one of the less obvious that won't quite see is some of the boiler rooms. You see the size of one boiler before compared to now, the, the same footprint. Two of them fit in the spot that one, with some room to, room to spare. And then you get a nice shot from behind of how the depth of the old boilers and how cumbersome compared to now, much more modern and more, more efficient in those areas. And then a couple different shots of the playgrounds that we had done, that you see. Everything, it's structurally the same but unique, and that, I think, is the best part of these phases of what the playgrounds were doing. Everybody has retained a little bit of their own unique building personality, but fundamentally, they're, they're consistent. And I think that's the best part of the playground. And I'm looking forward to potentially a, a second round, so then we could say that with consistency among all seven buildings. What am I, I think, if you haven't been to the second floor, DeWitt, the difference in the... in the way the hallway comes at you now with, because the HVAC, the second floor is now air-conditioned at DeWitt, all that, we had to replace all the ceiling tiles, so we went ahead and did the lights as well, so you can see the difference, it's all LED, and it just is a huge, huge difference when you look down that, down that hallway now, compared to the way it was before. So if anybody ever wants to take a visit and go see it, I'd be happy to come with you and see that.
It's tomorrow morning.
Sure you upstairs.
Any questions on where we're at with the current capital project and what's happening? The one thing I will remind you that we did have to pull out of this project is the pegboard and millwork that had been scheduled, and we're putting that into the next project, because we did see on the first round, our bids were probably about five percent higher than anticipated. We weren't as bad as some other districts, but we did feel some of the pinch of the construction costs going up, using the tariffs as a, as a, you know, springboard to charge us more.
When will the air conditioning be done at State Road and where else does it say?
Plank North?
Clem North. Clem North. So they'll start this summer, and hopefully, you know, maybe, possibly before school starts, but...
Maybe, maybe the board can take credit, when we did our learning walk at State Road, we were in our fourth grade, and just before we left, the teacher said, does anyone want to ask any of the questions, any of the board members? And this boy raises his hand, he said, can you do something about getting air conditioning here? So we'll take a little credit for that.
So one final review of the capital project that we're proposing for next Tuesday, the vote. So where do we get our project ideas from? We're still working with our Building Condition Survey from 2015, board site visits, board workshops that we've had, and conversations with administrators, PTSA, athletics, stakeholder groups. But we always focus on three things, health, safety, program, and then aesthetics is always last. So what do we have going? Elementary, that second round of playgrounds. With that second round, though, will also come removal now of some of the outdated equipment as part of Phase Two, too. So some new stuff, but also removal, so it's, everybody's backyard of the elementary schools, it's not just going to be all playground, it's, it's going to, the stuff that needs to be removed now will come out, that everybody will have two solid playgrounds, so we can remove that. Library renovations at all elementary, a modernization of those. Window replacement, windows need to be replaced just because they're original, but while that is happening, we are investigating security options with that replacement. That could mean a variety of things. Some of those, we're going to play a little, little tighter to the chest, because we don't want that to be, you know, our security playbook and our emergency services manual. So there's going to be some security upgrades with that, and we're going to really consult with Webster PD, our resource officers, and some security consultants, where's the best use of our dollars for the maximum protection. With that, we're also going to do the vestibules, aesthetic upgrades, as well as security redesigns of those, see what makes sense. At the elementaries, you'll see a lot of parking lot reconstruction and resurfacing that needs to be done. Some, namely Clem North, you'll see also, we have to spend some money for water mitigation there. Quite often, there are parking lot floods, so we're going to put a little focus on drainage there as well. And then, like I said, the pegboard and millwork carryover from 2016. What's going on secondarily? Willink, library is getting modernized there. It's hard to believe, by the time this project goes, that building will be about twenty-three years old. So if this is the, one of the first major renovations there, because it still has the new buildings feel, I think, so the library renovation will be nice there. We're also looking at some HVAC upgrades, adding a water furnace and a boiler system to augment the system that's already there to help it along, because sometimes, maybe you've heard, it is still a tad chilly in the winter there with the current system, so look to solve those problems. Their PA system is unique, we're going to change it, so it's online with the other ten buildings. Window improvements there as well, and then the fire panel mechanicals need to be replaced. Thomas, tech wing addition and remodel, for the amount of kids that we put through there, Project Lead the Way, students and Sparks Robotics are based out of there, that is, you know, antiquated and really strapped for space, so we're going to do that remodel in addition there for the automotive. Some safety improvements there, will also be windows and interior doors inside the building as well, fire-rated doors. The roof over the locker rooms needs to be replaced, the fieldhouse floor also needs to replace. The pool, the most, one of the most popular pools we have of the two, because of its warmth, is very popular with the kids. Our, well, for about eight more months, our most popular continuing ed program is the Learn to Swim program, until before and after care knocks that one down to number two, none of the kids want to go to the cold pool at the aquatic center. So we are humming four nights a week, Saturdays and Sundays, at that pool, so we got to upgrade the mechanicals. And then the athletic field improvements with lighting and storage at Thomas for baseball, softball, and multipurpose, and then some parking lot improvements, we're actually going to expand parking at Thomas, which has been a concern and an issue. At Schrader, it's going to look entirely different when you walk through those front doors when this is done, is the whole main office suite and that, the library that you see right there, complete renovation. All the bathrooms are going to be renovated as well at Schrader, some exterior wall repair on the south, southeast side, back by the athletics, some of the brick needs to be fixed and repaired and restabilized, and then some safety items there, window treatments, internal door replacements as well. Then a new track stadium with lights to bring it similar to what Thomas has, but long, long overdue for upgrade and replacement there. And then the same athletic field improvements at Schrader that I just described at Thomas, out behind the stadium for baseball, softball, and a multipurpose field. And parking lot redesign in the front, because anybody that's ever had to drop off or pick up at Schrader, at the end of the day, know that is going every which way, so it needs to be replaced. So because it needs to be replaced, we're also going to look at redesign simultaneously, and then some additional parking lot in the back, the kind of athletic fields, and the summer field where a lot of our U-sports are held and some of our other teams, that parking lot over there is going to be paved, right now it's kind of gravelly. District-wide, we're looking at the bus garage expansion, we are woefully short on parking over there, so that is a huge part, so we're doing some wetland mitigation for that, adding a wash bay, some part storage, and a vehicle lift for our bus fleet, fuel island redesign and fuel tank replacement. Right now, all our mini buses come over to this campus for fueling, because there is not unleaded fueling over at the bus garage. So we have about thirty-five mini buses, we'll take that traffic off of the Spry campus now and keep it over at the bus garage. So there's a little bit of an efficiency there, saving some miles back and forth. We're also doing a digital radio conversion. This, I would, I would say is probably number one and near to dear to my heart in this one for safety and security, because of where we're located in Monroe County. You know, a couple times we've tried to raise the repeater on this building to strengthen our signal to our buses and our other communications. Unfortunately, since we're so close to the Canadian border, we need Canadian government approval, and quite often that does not work out in our favor. So we're looking to consolidate everything to a digital radio conversion between buses, security, buildings, communications, and all our first responders, Webster Police, try to tie that all in. So we've started that conversation, investigation of what does that mean, possibly going with the county system, we're exploring multiple avenues, what makes the most sense, what's the most safe and secure, so we can actually have some radio communications in some of those parts of Lake Road, down by the dugout by the bay, where we struggle now, too. So, and then also, district-wide, with the purchase of the Basket Road Stadium from the Town of Webster, we are the number-one user of that facility, so very much looking forward to getting in there and, you know, getting a chance to, you know, own that and run it and see what we could do using our facilities and buildings and grounds. And then, of course, the assessed value of that is what we're required to pay by the comptroller, and then having that money converted to a Parkland Fund with the town, which then we'll also be able to enjoy as Webster residents moving forward as well. So overall, the project is sixty-nine point five million dollars. We've had a question, and I think it's good to address, of why we don't share a line item, because then we'd be giving away to all the people that will be bidding on this project the exact number we think they should put on there, and it leaves us no chance to have any kind of savings whatsoever when it comes to the project. So if we tell them exactly how much we think that parking lot's going to be, going to take a wild guess, they would bid exactly that amount of money. So that's why we keep this holistic when we talk about the budget. Estimated tax impact, so we're trying to replace the debt that's going to be coming off in a couple, in a few years. So the Willink and those projects are now subsiding, that comes off, this project will replace it, but then with a little extra, because we're assuming cost increase over the next two to three years by the, by the time we actually borrow. So about twenty-five dollars per year on average household, that this will, will cost more than what is coming off. We still have a lot of phasing to be worked out and determined, it's a large scope, so I think we're going to try to do that, maybe multiply submit parts of this project to the state, some of the things that maybe don't impact instruction, where, you know, we have that forty-two-day window of construction in the summer, some of those things that won't impact will go out the door first, and maybe we'll get approval faster. So like I said, trying to align it with the debt and avoid the huge swings in our tax cap and stay budget-neutral coming down the road here. So right now, we have sketchboards on display at all the buildings with ideas and layouts, we have the link to the website there, vote date is Tuesday, December eleventh, six to nine at Webster Schrader Gymnasium. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions from anyone?
Sue.
Can you just clarify the twenty-five dollars a year, that that amount will be within the tax cap?
That's what, yes.
Yes. Just want to make sure, people understood that it was not over.
Correct. Every year will be, every year we recalculate the tax cap, and that twenty-five dollars will be part of it, and we will, you know, always strive to be at or below the tax cap every year.
So this vote allows us to bond with the project?
Correct.
And it's voted on again within the budget?
Correct. Yep. Nice, we already have this in the budget, and another way to look at it is, these funds are already in the budget, we're just replacing, it's no longer Willink, it's this.
Sometimes we miss that.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you for the update on both projects.
No problem. I think I get to keep going, right?
Well, you do, unless Carm has anything to add for superintendent's report?
No, because he, he just really did my entire superintendent's report.
Very awesome.
And so I'll keep this short and sweet. First, Mr. Freeman has done an incredible, incredible work over the last year and a half in terms of getting this, the capital project that we're about to vote on on Tuesday, getting it all buttoned up, and being able to communicate it to our entire community. So Brian, thank you so much for all of that work. And then to Mr. Larry Wall, who has, he's been, he's been the champion of our second large initiative around start time, and Larry has been reaching out, anytime anyone gives us feedback on our feedback form from our webpage, Larry usually within twenty-four hours has reached out to that person, whether it's positive feedback or negative feedback. So every single comment is read, and, and again, a response usually comes from Larry within a day. So Larry, thank you so much for all of your work as well. Here ends my report.
Excellent. Thank you. And we continue to remind people to look at the website, to ask questions, look for feedback and any updates, and they happen all the time. Moving on, our board business, new business is the revenue and expense reports, which we will hear from Brian.
So the revenue and expense reports, it's just the monthly update that you guys get? Just want to point out, you'll see now revenue broken out a little bit more specific when it comes to tax returns and some of the rentals that we do, it's the, it's the very, very specific revenue and how we track it. And same thing with the expenditures, it's more of a line item. So if there's any questions, feel free, anytime, ask me if something stands out to you, but it's generally, it's the first report of the year, so nothing, nothing too earth-shattering with those revenue and expense reports. Any questions on any?
Seeing that there are no questions, this does require that we accept the report, so can we have a motion, please, to accept the report as presented by Brian?
So moved.
And second, Linda, and all in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous. And next, under business, is Plank North Capital Improvement Project Bid Acceptance.
Yep. So last month, we opened up bids for the hundred-thousand-dollar project that is at Plank North. Nary Mechanical, a local company out of Webster, won the bid for ninety-two thousand dollars. And what that work is going to happen, it's replacing the main water line from the road into the building at Plank North. So that's the work that's going to be done. Actually, we're hopeful that it might actually happen over Christmas break and get tied up, shouldn't take too long, because we think they could do it all without digging up the ground and just using the current tunnel that is there and using some modern technology. So one of the quicker, less intrusive of our hundred-thousand-dollar capital outlay projects, so...
I hope so.
Do we always take the lowest bid, or do you have like a rubric of...
We always take the lowest, the way it's phrased, the lowest responsible bidder.
Okay.
And the word responsible is a very expensive legal term, because it is a very large standard to not accept the lowest bid. In essence, whoever was the lowest would have had to have some, they did something terrible at your, you know, and the last project they did for you.
So someone can't say you chose this person because they're a Webster person?
Correct. They just, and you have every, as the second page there of every company that bid on the project and what their dollar amount was.
Any other questions? This item requires action as well, can we have a motion to accept the bid as presented?
I'll make that motion.
By Sue, and second by Dave, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is the Treasurers Report.
So one thing I just want to point out to you for the Treasurers Report, September is tax collection month, you notice this is cut off on September eighteenth, so we usually, we get our first huge tax transfer over from the town on the thirtieth, so you'll see, that's why, why does it look like we're short tax revenue for the month of September? It should be coming in all the time, it's just the timing of it, so I just wanted to point that out to everybody on this Treasurers Report. Other than that, not too much has changed.
Any questions regarding the Treasurers Report? This also requires action, can we have a motion to accept the Treasurers Report? By Maria, and a second by Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous again, thank you. And we have the first reading of the new policy four zero nine five, Health and Dental Insurance for Board Members, by our policy professional. She needs a title.
Yeah. This is a new policy, our first reading, and it's exactly what it says, it is Health and Dental Insurance for Board Members. This is a state law that says a board member, after, after serving a certain amount of time, can purchase at one hundred percent of the cost, health and dental insurance through the district consortium. So the benefit to the board member is that they are part of the community, but they still pay a hundred percent. So this has been instituted, and we do need to have a policy for it.
Well, maybe policy is a longevity tool.
When they do, they need health insurance.
So we just need a, a motion to accept the first read.
So moved by Dave, and a second, Mike, and all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous again. Motion carries. Thank you. Onto old business, we have board reports. We'll start with our school liaison reports.
Do you have your resolution? Oh, sign on there. There's a, there was a resolution.
A resolution.
Oh, yes, okay.
Okay. So we need to take action on a recommendation that I wrote to you about regarding a resolution settlement agreement and on the recommendation of our school attorney. Need a motion.
So moved by Jan, and a second by Sue. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. And now we're on to our school liaison reports. So Maria, would you like to start with DeWitt?
Uh, yeah. We had, I'm trying to think back. Well, we haven't... Well, yeah, we had the Halloween part, the Halloween parade, and there hasn't been much that, other than that, that I've been involved in.
Okay, thank you. Dave, anything to share about Plank North?
Yeah, Plank North has instituted a very interesting thing. It's the Pioneer Express Post Office.
I saw that in the paper somewhere.
Yeah. It's an authentic mailbox that was used at some point, and students and staff are allowed to put, drop letters in. So at the initial run of it, ninety-four letters were put in on the first day. And oddly enough, the most common letter was from one sibling to another in the building.
Oh.
Yeah. And so they've done a lot, a lot of interesting things with being able to, whether it's commute with a, or communicate with a friend in the building or with someone else, so. And the kids love it. And they actually, they have a mail room. We saw a video of the, how the mail is picked up, how it's sorted and delivered, so.
Maybe it's on the Webster School Facebook. Somewhere I saw a picture.
Yeah, it was a Facebook.
Was that, was that where it was?
Yeah.
Thank you. Jan, anything to share about?
Last meeting at Clem North was November thirteenth, and I think one of the big announcements was that the concert, which is coming up December eighteenth for the first time, will be off campus. It will be at Willink, and everyone is hopeful that, that will go well and be well received, because parking is a huge issue at Clem South, and, and it's something I've been concerned about a long time, the safety of people. Besides, we've tried to run buses from Clem South, but that, and they park up and down that road, but they park way up and down Clem Road, and they walk with kids in that long way. So I'm, I'm excited that they're going to try this, have their concert at Willink, and I, I think it'll go well. The other thing that they're very excited about is they now are doing a live morning show, and it is telecast in all the rooms, and that's great. And one of the big topics, there was a traffic flow problem, people dropping off, but when we went on our learning walk, they've been working very hard on it, and they have come up with, I have pictures and aerial pictures. They have a new routing and arrows, and I think it's improved enough so to get us through this year until we address it eventually with our new, hopefully our capital project passes, then we can address parking, because parking is an issue. So, and it's something that they're all concerned about. There's no December meeting at Clem North. They did do holiday helping hands one night, which was maybe November twenty-eighth, which was wonderful. Families came in and put together kits and packages for homeless and different things like, like that. And so I guess that's kind of what's going on at Clem North.
Excellent. Thank you. Sue, anything to share?
Yes, they had a craft fair at Schlegel on Saturday, November third, and it was a huge success. It was really, they had a lot of nice stuff. So it was very good. And see, on December thirteenth at seven PM is their winter concert, and they're also participating in a Hattan Mitten Drive for charity.
Thank you. And for State Road, Brian actually came, Brian Freeman came to the PTSA meeting and did a capital project review for those in attendance as part of the PTSA meeting. And that was very well received, and we did talk about start times. So there was a, a good group there engaged in a, a very important discussion about what that means for some families. So the next meeting, the next event they have is the Giving Tree Gift Collections from the first of December to the seventh. And the Holiday Shop is from the nineteenth to the twentieth. And the next meeting will be in January. Thank you. Your turn.
Thank you. Plank South's meeting, last PTSA meeting was on November seventh, and Brian was also there. He's been around a lot lately. Today was Poetry Day. Mike and I were both there. He was there at the early session. I went for kindergarten and fifth grade. Sixteen kindergartners got up in front of an audience and recited their poems by themselves. They were amazing. It was so great. Parents are there tonight, so I'm sure it's a huge crowd. Tuesday, December eleventh is third grade roller skating. The twelfth is the winter concert for fifth graders and School Seventeen gift giving. They're actually going to School Seventeen in another week, so that'll be exciting. And their next meeting will not be until January. I believe it's the seventh, thirtieth of January, so. And I also went to Spry, was on the fourteenth. Their next meeting is next Tuesday at six thirty. They had pastries with parents for the seventh and eighth grade families last week. It was pretty well attended. It's the first time they've ever done that. And they are going to have movies and popcorn during the lunches on the twenty-first. And their band concerts and chorus concerts have been going on all month, so it's busy over there. And that's all I have.
At the last Clem South PTSA meeting, we learned that they had a very successful VIP dance, and they've had a real successful Leo Pie fundraiser that went well above their expectations. They also had an author come visit their school, and the kids found that to be very, very enjoyable. They presently are having their book fair. They've got the money, bring it in tomorrow. They had a holiday party for their families last Saturday, and there is a third grade roller skating party scheduled for Tuesday, as well as their winter concert at night on Tuesday night. Now at Willink, besides the normal reports that the PTSA gave, we heard that they are sponsoring a pastries with parents for the eighth graders this Friday morning. They also reported on a very successful engagement with students when the PTSA handed out the fortune cookies, which we heard earlier this night. They're also looking for ways to engage students with their activity known as listening post. There's an upcoming coffee with the principal in January, and they do have a winter orchestra concert scheduled for next Wednesday. That's my report.
Thank you. And Linda and I both attended the central PTSA meeting Monday evening, and that was largely a capital project update, review of start times. So we sat in on that discussion and shared a little bit about our learning walks and everything that we've all been engaged in, and so that was very well received. We'll be able to share more with them. Moving on to Monroe County, our legislative report. Jan, do you have anything you want to share?
I didn't go on Tues, Tuesday, Michael.
Legislative Committee met yesterday.
Yesterday.
It was basically preparing for our Albany trip. We looked at who, who we will be visiting. And it's interesting to note that Albany right now is in, maybe turmoil's not the right word, but the majority became the minority, and the minority became the majority. And so everybody's shifting. They don't know what rooms they're going to be in. When you think about it, the majority leader has the biggest room. They no longer have that room anymore. They got to find another place. So it's weird. But we're finding it important to talk to people there. I'll give you an example. When Becky Schultz, our secretary, was calling for appointments, she called the Republican Senate, which used to be the majority. And when she called them, they said, what are you calling for? We're the minority. Why would you want to talk to us? But the point being, we want to talk to everyone so that we, they know all of our points. And the big things we're going to be talking about are school safety, mental health, full funding for the education formula, the APR and the student opt-outs. And besides all that, we just want to establish communication and relationships with all the new people. Losing Joe Morelli is huge for this area, and we don't know who the leader will be yet. So that's what legislative was all about, the Albany trip.
So twenty-four, Mike?
Sixteen.
Now it's down to sixteen.
Yep.
And this is on Monday?
Yes.
And I did see from Becky today that they finalized those two papers. I mean, they, we've distributed them.
If I give the executive report, you'll hear that.
Oh, okay.
And labor relations? Do you have anything you want to?
Um, the last meeting, which was this past Wednesday, last Wednesday, was Field Trips One-O-One, Staying Within the Law, when outside of the classroom. And it just highlighted a lot of the stuff that we have talked about, the importance of families having insurance on their trips in the event of inclement weather, and it has to be canceled. These are trips that are outside of the district, overnight trips, the Washington DC trips. Couple of things that I did not realize, it's a good thing that I had my, my friend Dave Swinson with me, that when the district takes motor coaches to Washington, that our transportation staff comes over and looks at the buses to be sure that they're safe and, and that they're in proper running order. So, which is a very reassuring for families, but a little bit of information that I didn't know. So there's a lot of information on it, but it was a good meeting.
Excellent. And then information in exchange, the topic was defending your district against social media attacks. And it was really, Douglas Gerhardt from Harris Beach spoke to the group, and it's really more about the, the standard that needs to be met for defamation or harassment to be filed, which is, it's pretty high for public officials. So we're considered to be public officials, and it's, it takes a very high standard to, to reach the level of a prosecutable crime. So it was informative, and meetings are scheduled for the rest of the year for information exchange. And Mike, back to executive.
Well, again, regarding the Albany trip, the executive board did give the final endorsement to the position papers on school safety and mental health. We did celebrate Jeff Crane, who's the superintendent from West Arondiquoy, as well as Sue Allen, who's the superintendent from East Arondiquoy, their retirements last night. We also passed a resolution giving Victor full membership into our association starting in July. And it's interesting to note, and I've mentioned this to the board before, next year is the hundredth anniversary of NISBA, but it's also the fiftieth anniversary of MCSBA. So we'll all, next year we'll be planning activities, and I hope the board can participate in those particular things.
And the convention is here.
Right.
Which is nice.
Great. Mark your calendars. So we can go ahead and complete the district committee report and move on to the learning walks? We get our reports out of the way? Okay, I think that makes sense. Audit Committee, thank you.
Go ahead, one's coming up in January.
Okay, and Policy Committee?
Actually, we had our meeting today. I would say it was very successful. We got a lot accomplished. We will be bringing one, one... First read. First read in January. And we're working on some other ones, but the review's going pretty well. Not a lot of significant changes, but some new policies that come up are, are significant revisions. And we did talk about, we had Janine Sanger there today, and the district is reviewing the TIG manual, the, what's that stand for?
Trauma.
Trauma Response, yes. And we'll be receiving that, a copy of that when it's done. And we talked about going forward from that, and also the discussion the district is having on restorative behaviors. And that will lead into, next year, we're recommending that the Code of Conduct be reviewed by committee and revised. There's been a lot happen, happening, and it's been quite a while, so. And that would be a committee, district committee. With full participation of stakeholders.
Good timing. And strategic planning?
Oh, I, yeah, Larry was kind enough to give me a quick update. So we had a meeting last month, I believe it was, and there are continuing efforts to support the district-wide start time change next fall. The core team is exploring project-based learning, which we've all been talking about, and an inclusive avenue to promote innovative and up and coming ideas. You know, how do we, how do we sift through and sort through and talk about new things that are coming down the pipeline that we've he, heard at conferences, that are, you know, in articles, that kind of thing? So we're trying to figure out a way to, to process all that and to, you know, have an inclusive conversation. We're also going to have our district-wide survey in the spring. So we'll, there'll be a quick review of the questions, shouldn't say quick, a review of the questions prior to that to make sure that we're gathering the information that we, that we want and that we need. And they will help, the survey does help us understand what our strengths are and the areas that we do need to improve. And finally, we will be adding a virtual suggestion box to the district homepage as another way for people to share what they're thinking about the district.
Excellent. And is there a meeting scheduled in January yet for strategic planning?
Do we have a new meeting? I think we did.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Sue.
Will you remind us of that date? Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, now on to, this is going to be an exciting, fun finish for us. So we have nearly covered every location in the district. We're going to DeWitt Road School tomorrow morning, and we still have to visit the Owl Program and the Goal Program. And then we will have completed all the locations within the district and have responded to an invitation to be present in the buildings and to learn more and to see our mission and vision in action, to see what student learning looks like, to see facilities, and maybe places where the capital, elements of the capital project are very, very much needed. So from the complete gamut of everything that we could have been exposed to, I think we were, but it was an extremely positive and well-received experience and one that we look forward to replicating again in the spring. So as it, as we say, it is our hope that this effort will open the door to more impromptu visits and expand our relationships and communication with administrators, teachers, staff, and students. So at any point, anyone is welcome to jump in and talk about any of the locations that you may have been present at, but this, this learning walk tour was established in response to the request, and we decided to act on it and set up a long string of appointments. So we came, we saw, and we loved every minute. And I think what an incredible experience to support and facilitate visits to all locations in our district to see what phenomenal work, collaboration, learning, teaming, and progress toward making our district great takes place on a daily basis. And then I mentioned what the visits also allowed us to do and see in terms of seeing the elements of the capital improvement project.
Got this slide?
Thank you. A list of all the locations and buildings that we toured. And...
Just let him know when yours changing slides. I can't see you.
I know, I can't see him either. Okay. It is important to include a high level of enthusiasm, joy, and hugs where our mission came to life. It is also important to include that challenges exist with space, infrastructure, and physical plant. And there's recognition... And there's recognition and appreciation that those concerns are identified and supported as well as current conditions allow. So while we saw some things that may need to be improved, we also heard that there was a high level of support from the district to meet and address any challenges as well as we could, given our current resources. Observations, Maria, this was your, this was your slide if you want to?
Oh, sure.
Also on your?
It was, I, I learned a lot, even after having been in this district for twenty-three, or, yeah, twenty-three years and living in Webster for over forty. Every classroom, every school that we visited was unique. And, and the common thread of being a community member and a learner who nurtures and inspires personal excellence, it pulsated through every single building that I was able to visit. The kids took, they were our tour guides, and that was incredible. That was, and, that was, they were just so proud to be showing off their school. And the, the bus garage really blew me away. I, I, all these years that I've lived here, I've never, ever thought about the intricacies of what goes on on a daily basis. That there's so much teamwork, collaboration, problem solving, determination, and perseverance that was really displayed by everyone. I never gave much thought to how bus routes get planned. I know now, and it's something I never want to do. It was just incredible. And although there are issues and challenges that arise in every area of any environment, our students and our staff and our administrators, which I, are part of the staff, I guess, the attitudes of cooperation and resilience, accountability, respect, and excellence just shows, just, just lets the success flow. It was just an incredible experience. I'm looking forward to being able to go to more places the next round. And I'll be at DeWitt tomorrow.
I will echo your comments. We saw constant evidence that our district goals are being implemented. We saw evidence that the whole child is being educated. We saw evidence that there's more and more student-learner centered classrooms. We saw evidence that there is a greater consistency within and across curricular areas. We saw evidence that there is the art of teaching going on. We constantly saw the essential skills, the mindfulness, the wellness modeled in the classroom, as well as students demonstrating those skills. And we constantly saw examples of how students are impacting the building and having a voice in their school culture. So I am echoing what you saw, Maria.
Absolutely. And next is security. That visit was just Linda and I, and we learned from Neil all the steps that are taken to ensure that drills that protect all of our staff and students take place on a constant basis. And that the SROs that we now employ across both feeder patterns are directly connected to our students. They are known by them, they are hugged on graduation day when they walk across the stage, they are very, very well-connected, and that's a big part of how we want to address mental health and identify any, any areas of concern. We also talked about sort of the logistics and day-to-day in terms of traffic flow and parking lots and, and buses, and it's a very real concern. Our, our schools were built when people walked to school, when kids walked to school, and they now have a, a very large flow of traffic. So there's a constant, a very real awareness of the challenges that exist and how we can best all work together to address those. Next, we went to Plank North. Want to jump in?
We went to Plank North and we actually arrived as the students were arriving, which was crazy. There were so many kids everywhere with being dropped off and coming off the buses, so definitely the capital project and addressing that parking lot will be much needed. But when we got there, we were directed to go right to a classroom, and I think it was a third, third grade classroom. And they have a morning show, and their morning show moves from classroom to classroom. Every day it's somewhere different. And the, the students in the, in the room participate, they're, they're in, uh, there was reading going on, Mike actually read, because the book fair was there, I believe, that day. It, it was amazing. I think one of the greatest things about Plank North is the principal and assistant principal, the fist bumps going down the hallway. It took us forever to get down a hallway because Craig would stop and he would have to ask Johnny how his evening was, how was basketball? The connection that, that the students have with both, both principal and assistant principal were incre, it was incredible. It really was a great experience and a lot of fun. And it was a great way to start our learning walks.
And we got to be on the morning show.
And we got to be on the morning show. We sat right at the, at the desk with Craig that morning, so yeah, it was great. And also, PTSA had given a grant to Food Services last year because Food Services wanted to bring in aquaponics to show the kids what was going on in the greenhouse. And we actually saw the aquarium with the betta fish in it, and they were growing, I don't even know what it was, some kind of herb, okay? And they had a contest, they were naming the fishes that were in there. So it was really neat to see, they were learning all about the greenhouse that's out at Schrader. So it was, it was a great day spent there.
Yes. And then next, technology was also just Linda and myself, but we learned about the Chromebook, the next cycle of the new Chromebooks and how the technology department is also looking for space where they can work more collaboratively and expand the way that they connect with each other and the way that they store and need to store all of our hardware. So they're looking forward to the new space and the ideas that come from the kids who are doing IT work at both high schools. Brian Zimmer has actually been able to consult with Dell and have them respond to them, some of those suggestions. So we're very much benefiting from this relationship that they've developed over the years that really has, has brought technology alive in the classroom. And on to Clem North. Who else was at Clem North?
Jan was there with us.
Jan.
I think that the coolest thing about Clem North is when you walk in, the front doors and the, the wall of the self-portraits that the students had made, and some are 3D. It's very welcoming, a lot of new paint colors within the building, the quotes on the walls were, it, it really was a very warm and inviting environment.
The center upstairs has been reconfigured and new furniture lends itself to, you know, real student learning, I think, out there.
Team-based.
At their yoga studio with the spin bikes as well, that was so cool.
And we were greeted by two fifth graders who were so proud to talk about their school and all the good things that go on there and wanted to make sure that we had a good tour and stayed with us until they felt they needed to go back to their classrooms, but they were very, very positive and very engaged, so that was great to see.
Yes.
And Plank South?
Sue, at Plank South, our visit, we were met by a group of four, four fifth graders. And our tour, that portion of our visit, the tour, was just the fifth graders. There was no staff with us. It was, it was awesome that they had planned out exactly where they wanted to take us and what they wanted to show us and who was going to speak at certain, certain times during that, that tour. They were extremely plod, proud of all of their work that was on display throughout the building. They loved their new bathrooms, they said the fifth grade bathrooms were incredibly large, they had never seen anything like that. Trying to think what else.
And we saw evidence from the assistant principal, who will be named principal, how strongly she connects with the students. I think that's an observation that we saw in every building. Our, the administrative staff is really, really caring for our students.
See the thumb, yeah, the thumbprints. So they each, every student in the entire building, their heart print, their thumbprints formed a heart on a tree. So this tree was just blooming with little heart thumbprints, but every single student in the building was part of that. So that was also something we saw across many buildings was that the art celebrated the entire school and encouraged all to participate. Schlegel Road?
Schlegel Road, we got there also at the very beginning of the day. It was that horrible snowy awful morning, oh, those poor kids, but every child came in with boots, hats, and snow pants, because at Schlegel Road you go outside for recess almost every single day unless there's a hurricane. That's what we learned. Francine, the principal, does morning announcements, and the very first thing they do is a mindful minute. And it, it's a visualization and it really starts the day out really in a, in a positive note. They have a really cool area by the art room called the Critter Corner, and there's turtles and others.
Guinea pigs.
Yeah, there's a lot of things. And, yeah. And the kid, the students sign up to take care of them and, and they have a response, job responsibilities. So that was really neat. We also got to go into a morning meeting where we learned "good morning, how are you?" in five different languages. So, yeah, it was very, it was exciting, the kids, throughout all of our learning walks, the kids were so open to us coming in. We were not seen as a disruption, they actually wanted to share what they were doing at that moment, what their learning was. So that, it was a great experience.
Yes, it was.
Yeah.
And each school as well has, definitely has its own personality. So for example, at Schlegel, Francine was, it was her voice that did the announcements in the mindful minute, and every classroom heard the same thing at the same time. So however each building chose to incorporate the things that we believe are important, it each had its own identity. And Schrader High School?
Schrader. Schrader, we had Deanna, who, she is one of our board liaisons, she was our tour guide. She was, she was great. We went into the library and the library there needs to be renovated, but what they've done this year to change the space, update it, our librarian over there has listened to the student voice, where they wanted different kinds of seating, they were more comfortable in beanbags and also at cafe tables. And she was very receptive to that, so there's different types of seating throughout that. It was also really awesome to walk around with, with Paul Benz, the principal, and how engaged and invested he was with the students. He had a secret handshake with a couple students, and those students were very proud to, to show us their, their handshake. He also, a few students came up to him and said, "I, I need to talk to you, I need to see you." They wanted to share something. And, and that shows that, you know, these, these principals do go into these, into these classrooms, they do make a point of meeting with the students, talking to them, getting to know them. He had a great relationship with them. There's a ton of photos on the walls of students and staff and, and as we were walking around, you could, Deanna was pointing them out to us as well. And that makes it feel more homey for the students. It makes them feel like they belong there because their photos, like at home, are on the walls, so this is a great visit.
And Clem South. Where, the, the therapy dog was incredibly impressive, and it was pajama day because it was the Tuesday before the break. So things were a little bit more casual, but it, at no point in any building did we see anything disruptive. They were engaged in doing what they were instructed to do, whether it was play a game or pet the dog or, the kindergartners and third graders were making soup together, so they were going through the entire recipe of what, what it takes to buy something, chop it up, what it was going to turn into. And, and they were just very engaged in, in everything that they did. The tour guides, the, the students at every location were just so impressive because they were either selected or volunteered and were very, very honored to be the one speaking for their school. And Spry. Do you want to jump in, Mike?
Spry, oh, yeah, we met with the representatives from student council and various class representatives. Again, it's amazing how that therapy dog just comms to kids, because they had a, a therapy dog there too. And it was also nice at Spry because there were a number of te, actually, Maria can identify this, there were some teachers that I actually knew. And it was nice to say, you know, hey, how are things going? It, it just, I have to echo what Linda's saying. There really is a feeling of community in all the buildings, and we saw it at Spry. It, it's just a great place to go to school and to work. Oh, yeah, I just saw Mrs. Curry's class. No desks, no chairs, just a unique place to have class, because the kids love that. She has contraptions that can turn into a desk or turn into a chair. She really likes to do a lot of yoga with the kids, and, and again, you can see the kids just gravitating to, to her. So it was a real interesting experience there.
So throughout the district, there were a variety of, of seating arrangements and it, I don't know that we saw a classroom where desks were in rows anymore. So it was all about different groupings, which actually creates more space in most of the classrooms, because you're so limited by, by the rows. So it, they changed it up all the time, which kept the students engaged and made them look forward to the next thing that they were doing. So transportation was our, oh, our picture, yeah, we'll have to make sure that we get that out. We wore security vests and walked down Alligator Alley so that we toured from the front parking lot to the back parking lot where all the buses are actually parked. There's enormous challenges there, and especially with the amount of maintenance that staff currently does to, to keep our buses in good working order. So that was very, very good to see and also see where improvements and more space could help them do an even better job of what they're doing. I know Maria spoke to this, I don't, I think we're, okay, I think we're good. And Thomas High School? Thomas, Sam, also our other student liaison, took us on a tour of the building, very engaged as well. We went to a biology class, we could see how they were learning. We went to, we saw a program outside the library where a twelve-to-one classroom was actually working and staffing a snack bar. And it's pretty incredible how these kids were engaged and knew what to do and knew how to keep track of their inventory and how, where supplies came from, and everybody had certain tasks that they were responsible for. They did an excellent job. And the tech wing, we saw firsthand how, how overcrowded despite the many, many programs, I'm not sure they work very well together because it all, it's all seamless, but there's definitely a need for more space and more bays and expansion because of the variety of programs and classes that we're able to offer kids.
That's where they had, they were working on four different automobiles, and then right next to it, they were making Adirondack chairs. And as the bell rings, they just kind of flip everything around. It, it was unbelievable, well-oiled machine, but desperately.
Couple jet skis, yeah.
Yes, there was so much stuff going on in there, it was crazy.
And throughout, there were murals on the walls, which were painted by our club students and extraordinary. We stopped in Todd Stahl's classroom and were invited back at any time.
I think at Thomas.
I think at Thomas, that is the one building that there will actually be physical changes to the library? I mean, that whole area is going to be redone, I shouldn't say redone, built?
Yeah, the courtyard.
The courtyard, yeah. State Road, we participated in a morning meeting. So we saw how they greet each other each day, how they make sure that they've all had a good evening before, that they're ready to learn and share with each other if they have any challenges or anything anyone needs to know. And it really gets everybody on the same page to, to go about their day. They had extra space where kids who require more, or kind of may experience an overload in their day, can go on a sensory walk. And it walks them through physical challenges, like jump three squares, and then you touch your toes, and then you change direction, and your hands are on your hat, and they're all simple tasks. But once they complete that walk, they're more able to let go of the, maybe the physical anxiety, and get back to learning. So that was, wherever there was space across the district, we saw very creative uses for it. And certainly allowing staff, teachers, and, and students as well to contribute to the suggestions that make that good learning space.
Was it State Road, when we went into the kindergarten class, you almost thought it was a first-grade class? For the work they were doing?
They were adding double, almost double digits, right?
And Buildings and Grounds is a very similar report, actually, to technology and safety and security, because they are all together. So they talked about all the projects that they're doing, all the things that they're able to do in-house. And I think that we've, I know from my experience decades ago, we've always been impressed with the, the quality of work and the resourcefulness that our Buildings and Grounds staffs displays all the time, to do as much as they can and keep it out of capital projects, and make the best use of, of all the resources that we do have. Blaine also shared how, when they look to hire, how they try to make sure that anyone who wants to be promoted knows that those opportunities exist. So it creates a lot of stability in terms of their, the group that is employed there, and allows them to work better as a team. The Health Office, you want to take over?
The Health Office, very tiny. It's actually a closet that we met in. I think one of the biggest things we learned from the Health Office is, is there's an incredible need for nurses and substitutes. I, I don't... Yep, it, it is unfortunate, and they are incredibly busy, just with so many more students with complex... I think we talked about, mostly we talked about the diabetes and, and the monitoring that, that is involved. So they're, it's very complicated, and it, and it, it takes a lot of their time, so that they feel very stretched. But just a great group of people that we met there as well, and they work so well together. They also, we heard about the one Health Office that had, was able, that we were able to this past year reconstruct it. I can't, was it at Dewitt? Because the, the cots were so close together, and they...
Yes. So whatever someone brings into the nurse's office, everyone gets to share. So creating more space to address the level of need in what students bring into the nurse's office, as well as make sure that their space accommodates those needs. So some of that is being done in-house as well, and some of that is being tied to the capital project. So although, this goes back to the initial comments, where although we see a lot of challenges across the district, people do feel listened to, and that as much as can be done, given the resources that we do have, is being done. And they do feel supported by district and administration. And Food Service?
We talked a lot, it was Mike and I when, on there, we talked a lot about the greenhouse. And I think the thing that I thought was, that I took away, that I think is just really wonderful, is there's so many students that volunteer to go in there and check the tanks, that the tilapia, they have the proper nutrition, keep your, keep their eyes on the tomatoes that are growing and the cucumbers. So there's a lot, and there is a lot of opportunities for the, the students to go in there and, and, and work. That was really great. And also that Food Services takes the suggestions of the, the students if there's, they want to try a different meal, or, or whatever. He does listen to what the kids say, and, and tries to incorporate those and changes in his menus, so...
And isn't it nice to know you can eat lettuce that's not the co-lime?
Our romaine is good, right?
They had no issue with their Caesar salads, so, yeah.
Incidentally, the Monroe County Annual Meeting is being held at Schrader, and Food Service is going to be catering it. And we are offering to everyone our fresh greenhouse garden salad and our tilapia.
Excellent. And on to Willink Middle School, where we were able to spend the morning with Dave Paddock and some of the students there. He, the first thing he had to show us was the selfie wall. He has a picture with nearly every student up on that selfie wall, and that was very important to him, as you walk in the building, that that's what you see. Tech-free Tuesdays in the cafeteria, regardless of what your device is, even if you're doing homework, it is about being engaged and talking to each other. And so we really, we, we toured the entire building. We were up and down every, every hallway. And again, they have the, the mural club, and you could see some of the progress, because they do have a lot of, they do have a lot of good space to fill. Want to add anything?
At Willink too, it was interesting, because we, we saw how the morning meetings work in the elementary, and that you can understand how they have the time to do that. And, and we, we saw an example of, of the morning meeting trying to be done at a secondary building, where you wonder how it can fit in. But the classroom we visited, it, it seemed to work.
And finally, a thank you to everyone who helped facilitate these visits. Students, administrators, teachers, we felt very welcomed. We truly enjoyed every single minute of these tours, and look forward to repeating it, hopefully in the spring. And look forward to the many impromptu invitations that have already happened, which was really kind of the driver part of this. Bless you. And as I mentioned, we're gonna be at Dewitt tomorrow morning, the Owl Program and Goal Program, and that will, that will be a wrap, yes? Okay.
Till next year.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
And moving on, we do have a bit more board business, and that would be our consent agenda. So everybody's had a chance to review that. Can we have a motion to pa, to pass the consent agenda?
Yeah, motion.
And seconded by Jan. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And so before we conclude, we just want to wish all of our families and community members happy holidays. And we'll see you in January, and hope everybody is safe. And please remember to vote on Tuesday, 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Schrader High School. We thank you for your support. Thank you all.